To ask if you haven't already done so, if you have electronic devices, please put them on airplane mode or silent, just as a reminder, so they don't disrupt our meeting. And then, secondly, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, again, welcome, everyone that's here this evening, and also for those of you later on that are watching on YouTube. So I'll first start with some introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I am the mayor, and to my left are council members Patricia Thol, Pam Mortenson, Mike Molliter, Shannon Bruce, and then on the end we have our city engineer with WSB, Paul Hornby, and then with us this evening, we also have our public work superintendent, Gary Peters, and our HR communications coordinator, Cassandra Tabor, and to my right, we have our city administrator, Mike Broney, finance director, Brian Grimm, David Abel is our community development director, we have Ron Beatty, who is our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven, and then on the end, we have our chief of police, Paul Falls. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve our agenda. Any additions or changes to the agenda? If none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thol. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been seconded by Ms. Bruce. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So first item on our agenda, our special presentation, tonight, we have Mr. Ron Polly with us, with the Historical Society, and he's going to give us our annual update.
Ron, good to meet you.
Okay, well, welcome, gentlemen.
Phil Borghers. It's an honor to be here. It's the first time I've really talked, other than trying to get a belly permit a few years ago, and I'm sort of out. But hello, my history, I grew up on a 120 acre farm over in St. Bonnie. My great grandfather bought 79 acres of it in 1873, so I'm straight around here, going way back. I currently live at 1300 County Road 110 North, and my wife and I got married September 3rd in 1966, and we moved into the house we're still in in November of that year, so we're dinosaurs when we moved in that neighborhood. We were the kids, now we're the old farts. One of the things that we tried to do at the Historical Society is gather information from around the area, Spring Park, you know, Mountain, and Trista, et cetera, but I don't think we have enough representing at Trista. I would encourage any of you to help us out with that. I remember as a kid growing up, I mean, Trista had a road grader with a single ax and dual wheels, like truck tires on the back, but when the snows blew in winter, the thing that I remember was, they had a Caterpillar D6 with a cab on it, and a big V plow, and wings off to either side, so they could plow their way through. And then, if it really was bad, they had an Oshkosh truck with a snow blower on the front, with a big power unit behind the cab. So it began to need it. If I could dig out those photos, and we could even show those at the Historical Society, because that's going back quite a ways, that's in the 40s. So, anyway, I was fortunate enough to work at a company called Tonka Toys. I started there in 1965 as a model maker designer, designing the mighty frame, the older car carrier, a lot of things. And I worked there until April '83, left about six months before they pulled out of Mountain. So when the Historical Society moved into the City Hall building in Mountain, they opened up, correct me if I'm wrong, but they had an open house in August of 2013. In September, Vern grabbed ahold of me and asked me about helping with the Tonka Room. So that's my responsibility, basically, at the Historical Society. We're open every Saturday from 10 till 2 o'clock, and we've got more toys and displays. We moved down to the fourth level when I see people went over to the fire hall office. And we currently, in front of you, I think, you've got a copy.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to go through line by line, because you can, I haven't got the time. Lisa said, "Talk to the whole ones in ten." But one of the things is, as we've expanded, and there's more interest, people are coming in. A lot of the people, which is shocking, you know, don't realize that Tonka Toys was even there. Couple of months ago, a fellow, a young fellow, he was 40, maybe you don't think he's young, but in his 40s, came in. He had moved to Mountain about three years ago, and happened to pull out an old Tonka Toy, and saw the word "Mountain" on the cab on the side of it. This was on a Wednesday. He said, "My gosh, I'm living in the Tonka where the toy was made." So that Saturday, he came in. Last Saturday, we had a couple from Iowa, a couple came from Seattle, Washington, and this is all because we start to shop on the internet and stuff like that. So that's helping, helping us with our income. If you look at the expenses, $9,136 for January 1st, it's kind of a struggle to keep going. We're running out of space. We took on more debt or rental space to leave the Tonka Room where it was, and move everything else down to the fourth level. But now, I'm running out of space in the Tonka Room, and the fourth level's running out of space for early Americans, high school yearbooks, and all that sort of thing. So, you know, we currently pay the city amount, what they call, you know, a rent maintenance fee, about $19,500 a year. So we've got to make sure we keep visitors and memberships, and, you know, any help that we can get from the local cities is great, we appreciate it. Our collections, you know, we've just recently got some Minnetonka wall maps, we've got a few more yearbooks, we got a cabinet donated by the family, Marty Gilbertson, and we've got that filled with Andrew's sister's stuff. Tonka Toys, a fellow by the name of Dennis David and Lloyd Lohman wrote a Tonka Toy history book a few years ago, and Dennis called me and asked if I'd be interested in the Minnetonka loader and dump truck that he used for a cover folder for the book. So we got that. And we typically have a monthly history talk down at Minnetonka Shores, and it can, they had to listen to me for a month. You know, I talk desperately sometimes, again, I guess. Services to the community, we're working on celebrating the 100th high school graduating class in spring, in spring. So I remember, again, going back to Minnetrista, Mildred Banks was part of the tour last week?
Yes, she was. Her home.
Her home.
Yep.
And I remember when she was a teacher in the little, single-room schoolhouse in East End of St. Bonnie, eighth grade. I went to the Catholic school over there, which was a two-story, red brick building, and my father went to, you know, things like the number seven, that used to come right by the ballpark. You make a right-hand turn, go up the hill by the cemetery, and at the top of the hill, you take the left, and you head on down until you hit the Baptist Church, then you take a right, and then you meander up, and if you know where the, well, you know, where the well is, it's down by what it shows, and the black top that goes through the woods, that was number seven. And it crossed over 44, and angled over to Zumbur. So, I mean, I've been around here, I've seen a lot of change, more so than a lot of you, I'm sure. You know, it's, we're, we're working on grants, so that we can properly catalog every item we have at the Historical Society, and since George and another individual really got us going on the website, out in the back of his head, you can see the traffic that's been generated. So with that, oh, that's it.
Okay.
So, any questions?
Any questions?
I have one real quick. The Treasures Uncovered, what is that? It's an event that's listed on here on September 23rd. It's right after the History Boat Tour.
Yeah, we're going to have, is that in here somewhere? It's going to be a special event where, ah, here we go. Come on. Let's see, good reach, I don't know. Here.
This is on your website, too, tonight.
So you can keep that passing around.
Well, I will say, and you can pass it on to Ms. Myers, is that we really appreciated her participation and her information that she shared with us regarding the history in Minnetrista, as we did our bus tour last week. So that was wonderful to have her on board, and looking forward to more. So thank you very much for all of your efforts. It's really important to have history and know the history in our community, so we really appreciate the efforts that you folks do at the Historical Society. Thank you very much.
I would have been on the tour, but my wife and I drove for Japan for a 10-day tour of the country, so.
Okay. All right. Well, maybe next year. Thank you. Okay, next on our special presentation, we have Chris Larson with us, with SCH. He's going to give us an update on our water treatment project.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city staff. As the mayor mentioned, I'm here to give you an update on the water treatment plant projects, or plants, project. The North Water Plant was substantially complete in December of 2016, so it has been treating water and providing water to the North Water System since 2016. That water treatment plant treats water from wells 1 and well 2A. The South Water Treatment Plant was substantially complete on March 17, 2017, and that treats water from the new wells that you have, wells 6 and 7. On that, part of that South Central Water System, too, was also, wasn't part of water plants per se, but a watering that connected your South and Central Water Systems. So that's all one water system now. And when I say substantially complete, too, that largely means that the water treatment plants are treating water. It doesn't mean that every single thing is painted, and that sort of thing that needs to be painted, that, you know, there's items left to be done, but it's doing what its intended purpose was. We started, so what we do is we go through the buildings and create what's called a punch list, and that's a list of items that the contractor has to complete. When we started the punch list a couple months ago, between a couple months ago and a month ago, we had 245 items, and most of them are minor, you know, adjust this door closer, paint this, do this. Some of them less so, depending on what work still needs to be done. But as of today, there's 15 punch list items that are remaining. Most of those punch list items are pending. Some of them are pending, sort of decisions or action on, you know, Gary and my part, specifically where you want the control panel, of all sudden. We're asking them to move it.
And they know that, and they're going to do that?
Yes. And I'm just saying, so even the major punch list items aren't contested, they're not, they're not, they're just, and it's like I said, some of the bigger ones are actually waiting for a response from us. Some of the other punch list items that are out there right now are things like, some of them are real simple, like, you know, you need to put fire gok in on some of the penetration in the chlorine room, or, you know, paint the bottom side of the hand wheel operator on the valve in the raw water room. And a few others are, and those are just items that, you know, that they either thought they did, or, you know, just thought up, got missed, but not, not major issues. There's some others that are a little bit trickier, like, you know, the fire alarm's not communicating correctly with the, with the City Hall, or it's not sending the signal, but it isn't. You know, there's about five different companies, I don't, I'm not exactly, I think there's about five companies involved. One says, "Well, you know, we can see your signal at the fire alarm panel, but it's your firewall issue." So they're, they're trying to work with it, there've been several meetings, that's, it's just not, you know.
Is that the alarm that keeps going off every morning?
No.
Okay.
No, that's a different.
That's a different, okay.
So the majority of the punch list items are pending. There is a little bit of work yet at the South Water Plant, but it's work that we asked, we asked them not to build the fence a month ago, or three weeks ago, and it was because if they did, they were going to have to install a blacktop around fence posts, that kind of thing, it just wasn't in the right sequence.
Okay.
Rather, you'd hit it right, just wait until, you know, it's the right time to build the fence, and it wasn't, and that time is coming, but it wasn't three weeks ago. You mentioned there have been some bugs on the, I mean, but these are complicated projects. These aren't, you know, you know, it's a, there's quite a bit going on, there's chemical processes, there're mechanical, electrical processes, there's computers that control the whole thing. So there have been, and there always are, bugs on projects this big. Some of them, like mentioned, Mayor, was that, you know, there were alarms that were going off that, you know, dial the operator and tell him he needs to do something. Depending on the stage of the project, the alarms may or may not be valid, but you can't treat them like they're not valid.
You still have to go in at 3:00 in the morning.
Yeah, that's right. So we are working through those things. I think most of those have been settled now. You mentioned there have been some issues, we had some issues with backwash water recycling, so when the filters get dirty, you have to backwash the filters, and then when, you know, when it's all said and done, and we're very close to that now, that water then gets recycled, and you only dump sludge, and sludge is a nasty word for something that's not really, it's fairly innocuous, it's onion and mayonnaise solids and water. But that issue was probably twofold, that the filters were backwashing more often than we anticipated, we think we worked through that issue, and the recycle flows were getting hung up, and then that correction is immediately pending, so. But all in all, they're, you know, for all intents and purposes, the water treatment plants are complete, and the residents are receiving treated water.
Good. Questions? I'm assuming there'll be some grass seeding and some plantings and stuff. I know at both plants, they need a little attention.
Definitely, this outside, there's, the seeding hasn't been done yet.
Okay, and the north side?
I don't know that there's a lot of landscaping that was in the plans, per se.
Okay, we'll have to look at it.
It's been seeded.
Yeah, okay. All right. Good. Well, we're glad we have treated water, and now that the water towers are cleaned, and flushing, Gary, has the flushing of the hydrants been completed?
We're done down south, and central's pretty much done, so we just got a little bit of north left to do, and we'll be done.
Good, good. All good. All right. Anything else? Otherwise, thank you very much for coming.
And Chris is going to stick her on, unfortunately, during the whole meeting, but we're going to go into closed session and be a participant in that when we get to that point, so.
Okay.
Understood.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. All right, and then we have one more. Ms. Cassandra Tabor, you're going to talk a little bit about our second annual city bus tour.
Yeah, so I just thought you'd take a minute and give an overview. I know that a majority of the council was there, so thank you for attending that. As noted in the picture here, we used Voight, again, as our bus company, they did a fantastic job last year, and I think we had a good, a good driver and a good bus, quality bus this year around. We had about a 10% increase in reservations this year over last year, so that was good to see. About a quarter of them were returning from last year, and about a quarter of them were referred by people who attended last year, and then the other half were just new to the whole deal, so that was good. We visited Josh Sabasky's cabin, so there's.
Which is the little log cabin that Mr. Polly just mentioned?
Yes.
Yeah, Mildred Banks' cabin, yeah.
So that was very well received. We did this last year as well. And then if you jump over to the next one, this was a new addition this year. We stopped at Vern Gagne, am I saying that correctly?
Yep.
Gagne's home, and we're able to tour the.
Farmer home.
Farmer home, correct, right. Obviously, now that's part of the Three Rivers Park District, we were able to spend some time there, get some questions answered here, a little bit about the history of that. That was very well received as a new stop for us. And then that's just a deplaning picture, but we made it back about 10 minutes after, after our planned arrival, so we stayed pretty close to schedule. But there's so much to see in the city, I think we could spend about five hours out there.
And it was a lot of fun. It really was. Everybody on the bus, when they got off, they said they had a lot of fun, and they learned a lot.
Yeah, my favorite quote was from a woman who's sitting up front, and unfortunately, I didn't catch her name, but she's lived in the city for 30 years, and she said she saw things and heard things that she hadn't seen or heard before, so I thought that was a win as well, so, yep.
And great job coordinating it.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Yeah, very well done. All right, so next, we move on to persons to be heard, and nobody has signed up, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Anyone want to remove anything from the consent? Otherwise, it's.
I'd like, excuse me, sorry, I'd like to remove the June 5 meeting minutes.
Okay, the regular meeting minutes?
4D.
4D, all right. So with that, we have approve our work session meeting minutes from May 15, 2015, approve our regular meeting minutes from May 15, 2017, C is approve our work session meeting minutes from June 5, 2017, and then E is a resolution to approve claims, and F is a resolution to approve the Woodland Cove A U R, A U A R update.
I'd like to remove C.
Maybe, work session meetings? Okay, so we have C and D removed from the consent agenda, so now they consist of A, B, E, and F. Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve A, B, E, and F?
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And Ms. Mortenson, seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll take C first, since that's first on, that's the work session.
Yes, there's an item here where we talked about recycling, section, I think it's item 2. There's a reference to millenniums, I think that was supposed to be millennials.
Yeah, just, all right. And then we have number D.
Right, on D, page 14, there's the resolution adopting the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The language wasn't recorded accurately. The Laker got it right, that the additional language, the whereas, and I wrote this up and I sent it to Chris, but I'll just read it. It was supposed to read, "Approving the Preliminary 2040 Comprehensive Plan with Changes Recommended by the Planning Commission, Included in Council Packets, and the Additional Revisions Made Here Tonight, comma, and the Addition of Whereas the City Council Acknowledges Projected Growth in Population by the Metropolitan Council Has Been Historically High, the City Will Evaluate Population and Household Growth on a Continuing Basis," period. It also had included a sentence that Councilmember Thol had asked to be struck, and that was, "and may adjust accordingly going forward." So if those changes.
What will change? We'll just double-check the resolution and make sure that that also gets corrected, then?
Yes.
So, okay.
And you can check the Laker, because it's, the language is accurate in the Laker. The second item was on page 16, 6B, the Red Oak Concept Plaid, and for some reason, a comment was attributed to me that I didn't make, where it says Bruce also likes the Villa style. It said, "Would like to have as many trees as possible and work on the trail." I didn't say that, I'm not sure who did.
I probably did, but I do recall you saying that you like the Villa style, but you're correct, yeah.
And, but I also did say, but I had some concerns about the turn lanes on County Road 19. And I put this in an email to Chris as well, so you should have that language. And then in the council, on page 16, again, the work change order for the water plant, it was 6D. That should read, "Bruce Requested That the City Develop a Policy Regarding Change Orders," and the rest of that is accurate. That's in the email to Chris.
Well, that's, but Ms. Bruce, that kind of, it says here, "Bruce Commented That the City Should Have a Policy Regarding Change Orders and What Amount Should Trigger the Change Order." I'm not sure that you, it doesn't matter whether you said should or should develop, what I'm saying.
Right, well, and the point is here, that I should have made a motion to do that, and I'd like to do that at this point, is actually.
Well, I think, okay, first of all, that motion, we're talking about the minutes right now, so let's finish that, and then if you want to talk about creating a policy regarding change orders, we really should have that as an agenda item, because that's a whole agenda item.
Okay, and I'd be fine if we just put it on a work session.
Okay, that's fine.
We can put it on a future work session, but we can just make a note of that.
Okay, so, like I said, the minutes should reflect the general gist of what was said, so if it's not word perfect, I think we're still okay, because you did say that the city should have a policy regarding change orders, and what amount should trigger.
Okay, that's fine, I can say.
Okay, and staff will note to put that on a work session, so, okay.
And that was it.
All right. Any further changes? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from June 5, and the work session meeting minutes from June 5, with those changes as we discussed here today.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we'll move on to, we have no public hearings, so we'll move on to our business items, and that is, starting with our accept the bids and award the contract for Halsted Drive Improvement Project. That's Mr. Hornby.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We did receive bids and open bids last week, and we had 18 plan holders, and we had four bidders, and that's not unusual. We did get some good bids, good competitive bids. The lowest bid was received from Ram Excavating Incorporated of Winstead, Minnesota. Their low bid amount was $2,463, excuse me, $463,996.55. The bids ranged from that amount to $2,849,328. The engineer's estimate was $2,761,365. Good bid, separation between the first and the low bidder and the second low bidder is about $220,000, so it's a good bid. One thing I will comment on, the contractor, this contractor, or this company, doesn't have a history of linear, linear projects, but they have hired staff that are and have done some. I did check on some of the references they sent me, and no issues came about. They've worked on transportation projects, fairly large ones, the personnel that this company has brought in. So I don't have a concern about the fact that the personnel they've hired to do the work can do that, so it's. So it's not unusual with all the, you know, since the downturn of the economy of contractors and engineering folks changing hats, changing companies. This company is starting up a road division where they didn't have one before, but certainly have done large excavating projects throughout the year. With that, there is a resolution in your packet. Receiving the bids and awarding the contract for the Hallstead Drive Street Improvement Project, that's City Project zero one dash sixteen. And that's resolution one hundred dash seventeen.
Okay. Questions?
I have a question. When I read the fiscal impact on this, awarding of this contract, I expected to see something to the effect that the city is borrowing funds for this project. And all it said is that it's being paid for out of the Street Reconstruction Fund. It doesn't mention the fact that we're borrowing money and what the term of that bond is and what the interest costs are for that. And I think whenever we borrow money for something, I think it has a fiscal impact. And this is the reason why we borrowed that money and I think that needs to be reflected.
We haven't borrowed the money yet.
Well, I know, but we are going to borrow the money for this project and it has a fiscal impact.
Well, that would be, see, we don't borrow it before the project because we don't know how much we have to borrow.
I realize that.
And so generally what they do is they give us, and through, if you look at our long-term financial plan, it does kind of state that in there, gives us a range and an approximate based on estimates. And the estimate was higher than what these numbers have been coming in at. So actually, if you go to the long-range plan, it'll be somewhat less than that. So a lot of things are kind of in flux until everything gets finalized. So one of the things, how much we're actually going to have to borrow is one thing. Interest rates is another factor that's going to be in there. So some of it is somewhat of a guessing game.
But the majority of the project cost is coming from borrowed funds.
Not the majority. The majority is not coming, well, about fifty percent.
We'll bond first and then we have the other sources of Minnesota state aid dollars and then the assessments. We'll bond for, we'll get the state aid money and we'll bond for the rest and the rest will come from the taxpayers and then the assessed benefited properties.
Right.
Which I think all along we've been talking about, the council, we don't have two and a half million on hand, so we're going to be borrowing the funds. I mean, it probably could have, when this was drafted by Mr. Hornby, I mean, the funds are going to be borrowed through bonding, put in the Street Reconstruction Fund and paid back to, I mean, I, I don't know. I was going to say, I can't think of too many cities our size that have two and a half, three million around that. It's pretty standard to bond for that. So I guess for the future, we can put that in wording and delineate that a little better, I guess, or.
I should comment that this is probably the only report I haven't mentioned that would bond me for this project.
We've been talking about this from the very beginning. Yeah, yeah, we have. I'm sorry, it's, unfortunately, you're coming in kind of at the tail end of it, so.
And I realize that, but the point, the point is, is that not only is this the cost that we're looking at here, but it's the cost of the interest over the term of the bond that we're looking at as well. And that's a fiscal impact on the city and I think it needs to be reflected in the fiscal impact statement.
It's in our financial, long-term financial.
No, I think it needs to be in the fiscal statement here.
I'm, okay.
Well, okay, just if I'm understanding this correctly, first of all, we can't have accurate interest costs because the bonds haven't been issued yet, therefore we don't know the interest rate. So we don't even, we won't know that until we issue the bonds. So, and if I understand another aspect of how this works, because this is an assessable project, while people are assessed, that doesn't mean they pay it immediately. So they might, some people might pay their assessment immediately. Some people might pay it over the course of, I believe, fifteen years. So for those who choose to pay it over the course of fifteen years, we have to pay the contractor right away. So we have to borrow bond for that money even though it's actually assessed. So I think that might make it a little bit difficult because again, there's another unknown. We might have, if people, if fifty percent of the people who are assessed decide to pay immediately, that's less money that we technically have to bond for even though. So I think there's a little bit of difficulty on that component as well to get an exact number on here for that.
And I'm not asking for an exact number. I think in the interest of transparency, when constituents see that we're awarding a project like this, that we should tell people that we're borrowing the money to pay for it and there's interest.
And we've been seeing that, yes.
We're approving it tonight.
No, no, we approve the financial plan. We approve it on an annual basis and we review it at least twice a year, if not more frequently. And, and we've been discussing this project for two and a half years. And we've repeatedly discussed the fact that we're going to be bonding for some of it and some of it is going to be paid for with our MSA dollars and some of it is going to be paid for if we had enough cash, but I don't believe we do, but. So there was a number of different buckets that we were going to be taking the funds from.
But we are awarding this contract to someone tonight and we're making a commitment tonight.
Correct.
But we budgeted for this in our budget, in our financial management plan, that we were going to have a tax levy impact starting in twenty eighteen that would continue forward at estimated at, I can't, one hundred and thirty, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, whatever. Based on our budget process and our financial management process, this didn't come up overnight or as far as like everyone else is saying here, I guess.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, council, we're doing this in an absolutely standard fashion. As several of you have commented, the council has been very upfront, very transparent about the fact that some of this project is going to be bonded for. It really doesn't matter whether it's all or some, it's the same process. We're going to be selling bonds and bond council will require standard resolutions. The resolution that you're considering adopting tonight is the standard resolution that includes everything the statute requires in order to award a contract. We will move on at a future date to the actual bonding and as several of you have pointed out, we don't know sitting here tonight what those details are. We'll have to see what the market is at the time. But I think everyone anticipates all along, including any member of the public who's been paying attention, that there will be financial costs involved with selling a bond for this project. There's no doubt about that.
The other thing we looked at, Ms. Bruce, just, again, you probably weren't here, but the other thing that we discussed is the fact that we get MSA dollars every year. And once those, once that amount reaches a certain plateau, if you will, then we actually start losing money. And so we have to, we want to be sure that we start using it before we start losing it. Because that also costs our taxpayers money. And so when we looked at a project, we said, okay, which project could we do using the full MSA dollars? And, and what can we do with those dollars? We could have selected just a portion of this and it would in the long run cost us a lot more.
And the point that I want to make, and I may not be making this very clearly, is that when you borrow money, it has a fiscal impact on the city and I would just like that reflected in the fiscal impact that we are using improvement bonds in the fiscal impact statement on this.
I think we stated that we don't go into that detail at this moment in time, so I would, and Mr. Hornby, I think that you mentioned that usually you would have mentioned something about the bonding, but you unintentionally, inadvertently left out that piece. So my question, moving on a little bit, is more on the choice of contractor. You mentioned something about the, the company that we're looking at choosing. Some of the individuals have this type of experience, but not necessarily with the company that they're with.
Excuse me, I don't think we settled the issue that I brought up before we moved on to something else. I think if we look at WSB's proposal later in the evening that we're going to be approving the management of this Hallstead project. He actually, WSB includes the fact that improvement bonds are going to be used in the project. And I'm just, why can't we put that in the fiscal statement here?
Okay, so I guess my question is-
I think he was saying it was just an oversight. I mean, basically it was, I mean.
And I'm just saying, put it back in. If it's an oversight, put it in.
But we're beyond that. See, this is, the packet is the packet. So you're saying go back and put information into the packet after the fact? I guess I'm asking, I'm wondering what you're asking for.
Into the fiscal impact statement about awarding this bid. I would like it to stay.
I'm not sure there's a fiscal, what page are you referring to maybe?
Page seventy-five.
Okay.
I think what you're saying is you just, when it says funded by the Street Reconstruction Fund, it should have said through general obligation improvement bond.
Exactly.
And let's state that for the record, I guess, or.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Okay.
Would you restate that for me? So I can write it.
I'm not, maybe Brian, you could.
I think it just, so the Hallstead Street Drive Street Improvement Project costs are funded by the Street Reconstruction Fund through general obligation improvement bonding. Minnesota state aid funds and assessments to benefiting properties. Partially, yeah, partially, correct, partially, yeah. And we're not going to bond for the amount that-
Improvement bonds.
Okay.
Before stating.
Okay.
Have we concluded that topic?
Yes.
Thank you. So as far as the contractor that we'd be choosing, I, this Hallstead Drive, it seems like it's going to be fairly complex. And I want to make sure that whatever contractor we choose has significant experience with this type of a road. There, the, any of the bids, I believe it was stated, are under what we had forecasted it would cost. So I want to, us to be thorough in choosing the best contractor, not the least expensive, so that we minimize the amount of surprises that we don't anticipate.
That's, that's a good point. Why don't we have Mr. Beatty weigh in? Because I think there's some legalities.
And I'm not saying that I'm opposed to who's being suggested. I just want to make sure that we have thoroughly thought through that.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, council, I certainly understand what you're saying. One of the challenges in dealing with public bids is that we are required by law to award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder. And one of the challenges that comes up occasionally is, I think, what you're referring to, is that we all know that price isn't necessarily the only determinant in terms of what we would choose to do. But we are bound by law to pick the lowest responsible bidder. Now, responsible means a number of things, but it means basically able to carry out the project. And so what I think Mr. Hornby was saying at the beginning was that while these folks don't have experience, at least this company doesn't have experience in building this kind of project, they are assembling a team of individuals who have done this work before in other companies. And so it's his evaluation, and you can certainly ask him more questions, that they are a responsible bidder. And therefore, if they are the lowest responsible bidder, we need to award the contract to them. An alternative is to determine that they are not the lowest responsible bidder and go to number two and go through the same analysis. Or ultimately, the council is free to reject all bids and basically start over again. But of course, there are timing implications of doing that. That would ensure that this would not be a two thousand seventeen project. It would be delayed until next year.
Okay, so with that answer then, Mr. Hornby, can you reassure us? And how can we be reassured, reassured that this is a responsible contractor and that this project will be completed exactly like we want it to be?
The, I guess the things in my research with contractor is they're an excavator. And they've done some very large excavating projects. I didn't see anything in the company's resume where they did linear projects, in other words, roadways. So what they've done though is brought in personnel who have done highway projects and county highway projects and have a little bit of work in municipal subdivisions. So the people that they're bringing in and that they have as part of it, in fact, the people who are bidding on it, the person who brought the bid in is the, will be the project manager. And he has brought in people he has worked with to open a road division with this company. There's also incentive from a contractor to do a good job, especially when you're starting up a road division. So you're going to bring in personnel to do that. This project is largely an excavation and embankment project with pavement on top. There's very little utility work to it. In my mind, it's not necessarily a complicated project. It's actually a big earthwork project.
It's what, I'm sorry?
Earthwork project. It's a large earthwork project. So it's just linear in fashion. Difference between this and maybe if we just ignore the fact that they had, are starting a road division, the difference between this project and perhaps something that's in the middle of North Dakota is that we have a number of residents a little longer who have to maintain access, but that's also required with the contract. So just in the review I've done, you know, can they do the work? I think certainly they can do the work. Have they brought in personnel that can lead and manage the work? Yes, I think they have done that.
And council, these are the exact same questions that both Mr. Beatty, Mr. Grim and I had in our discussions last week with Mr. Hornby about the firm, as he said, hey, you know, I don't see a lot of road projects. So he did his research and he satisfied the three of us that they're fully capable of doing the project. So I agree with Mr. Hornby. I don't think we're going to have any issue with this group, so. But that doesn't mean they're not going to be able to do it.
How long have they been a new division?
Let's see, I think the gentleman who submitted the bid has been with the company eight weeks, so two months.
But with this company, but he's been with other companies?
He has over twenty years of experience doing the road.
I appreciate Patricia's question because that did alarm me too, so, but thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, so we did work with them to get some references. I did talk to one, to Mindot earlier today. They did a project for them out near Litchfield that went off with some issues.
Yes, I think that lowest responsible bidder, responsible is the focus in there. Similar to when you ask for people to submit their resumes for a position, they have to be qualified candidates. They, you know, a candidate is one thing, but they have to be qualified for the job. So I didn't know if there was, if that company could be disqualified, you know, if there was another company that was more expensive, that had more experience with our particular project. If that could be selected and the lower bid could be disqualified because, under the, you, using the word responsible, you know, do they fit that they're the lowest responsible bidder? But you're an engineer and you're the state city staff and you've discussed this in more depth. So I'm going to defer to your expertise. I just hope that when we get further, no pun intended, down the road on this, that we won't be having some issues as a result of their lack of experience as a company. There is some benefit to having people who have worked on projects together before as opposed to just bringing in individuals to work on a project. So I would say that I support you, but I am concerned.
The one thing I should add is that they emphasized in the information they sent to me that the person who's going to be the project manager is also going to be estimated to bid the project. He'll be manager for the project and his supervisor informant came with him from another firm, from another company. So they're not just, they've all worked together before. So it's not that they just pick people from one place or another. They've worked together in another company and have joined this company.
Good to know.
As I've been told.
Yep, good to know. Okay. All right, any other comments? Otherwise, um, is there a motion to accept the bids and award the contract for Halsted Drive Improvement Project to REM Excavating Incorporated in the amount of two million four hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made the motion and Mr. Mallard are second at that. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next we have approve our professional services agreement for construction observation services with WSB for the Halsted Drive Improvement Project. Mr. Hornby?
Mayor, members of the council, in your packet, I think on page seventy-nine, there's a staff memo and also the engineering scope of services and proposal and also a resolution to provide the construction, um, observation, project management, construction management, the administration and documentation necessary for state, using state dollars on a project. Um, it also includes the construction materials sampling and testing in accordance with state, um, materials schedule, scheduled materials. The, um, project was prepared in a stated format and we are proposing to use stated dollars for the project. So you have to have full-time personnel on the project when the contractor is working on major items. Um, and the services reflect that. It also includes a survey staking. Uh, we have weekly construction meetings, the, um, pre-construction conference, management of the project, pay vouchers, labor compliance, review and documentation. Um, the contract administration, uh, we do have to certify materials and provide that summary to MINDOT, uh, the final documentation and record plans for the project. And there is a resolution that would, um, authorize or approve the, um, proposal and authorize WSB to perform this work. I should mention that in the feasibility report, uh, the indirect costs were around eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, to date, as bid, the indirect costs would be about seven hundred and fourteen thousand. The scope of services is proposed, um, on a hourly basis, not to exceed without prior council authorization. Items that come into effect that might, um, change that is, you know, if there's a major utility in the way which we're not aware of. Or if for some reason the contract extends beyond the estimated construction and completion dates, which we're not that aware why that would happen either. Project is substantially complete to the Batumina Space Course, um, by the middle of November. And then the final punch list, um, and lift, the final lift of the two minutes would go on before the end of June in twenty eighteen.
All right. Questions?
I have a comment. Um, on page eighty-one, it has the, the sheet that shows all the personnel that are going to be doing this work. And under clerical, when I look at the rate being paid for a clerical person, I understand that that's a fully loaded with benefits and operational costs and the entirety of that. But when you take seventy-five dollars times forty times fifty-two, that comes out to a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for a clerical person on this project. And even fully loaded with operational costs, I think that's an extraordinary number. And it makes me question some of the other numbers, whether they're extraordinarily high as well. I, when I looked up a median salary for a senior clerk with ten years of experience, that was, I came up with forty thou, around forty thousand dollars. And paying a clerical person seventy-five dollars an hour, I think is extraordinarily high, and I'd like to ask why that is.
We don't, the administrative clerical is not paid seventy-five dollars an hour. That's, includes benefit, overheads, profit.
Right.
And the cost for the clerical person is fifty-five hundred and fifty dollars, uh, on this project, which is pretty low.
And I'm, I, I realize it's, it's just an indicator. Looking at that, it makes me question the other numbers and whether they're high as well. And I'm wondering if we need to sharpen our pencils a little more and see if we can bring this cost down.
Well, first of all, I think if, um, if you look at their hourly, it's, it's, it's in their, how to say, disclosure, if you will, you can look at all of their hourly rates. So the hourly rates isn't going to change. And, and as Mr. Hornby pointed out, a lot of these numbers, that includes their overhead too.
I.
And that's with any company, no matter who you're with. And then the other thing is, this is a not to exceed and it's very possible it could be less hours.
All right. Madam Mayor, if I could add in, you know, when I look at putting together a proposal for this type of work and I'm putting not to exceed on it, I want to be a little bit conservative and I'm going to put some contingency in it. That's hands down, I'm going to do that, so I don't have to come back every other month and ask for additional funding. So that is done. One of the things we did in here too is that, um, now WSB has a full geotechnical firm with a state certified lab. So all the material testing and certification is also included in this proposal rather than having to go out for quotes from AT or Braun or one of those. Very cost competitive, um, so, you know, our rates aren't going to be any different hourly than, uh, any other firm of our size that we compete with in this little market. So, um, am I going to add some hours in here and be a little conservative? Yes, I'm going to, because I put it in as a not to exceed. Does that mean that I'm going to bill to the limit of that? No, it doesn't mean that. I only build, we only use the time that we need to, to complete the work. I think we have a record of doing that.
And I, I think WSB enjoys, uh, a great relationship with the city of Minutrista and I, and because of that, because we're not bidding this out, we're not getting competitive bids on this work. I think, I, I think this is high.
Um, yes, what we did, um, a few, you weren't here on the council at the time, but this was last year. What we did is we actually had staff go out and do a number of things so that we could be assured that we were getting competitive rates. And one of the things they did is they, they, um, looked at rates from other companies that would offer similar services and what their hourly rates were versus WSB. And then the other thing they did is they also looked at other cities and said, what do you do for, um, engineering services? When do you go out for, for bids and that kind of thing? And we, we found that there's very few cities that change engineering firms. That was one thing. And number two, when you have your own engineering firm, you trust that they're going to give you the best, um, advice and the best rates that they, that they can. And we found that they have done that. And so, um, I think to say, well, we should go out for bids, one is going to.
I didn't say that.
Okay, all right.
I didn't say that.
Okay. So you're just wondering if this is competitive, is that correct?
Yes, and I think a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for a, a fully loaded clerical person is.
We're paying fifty-five hundred.
I realize that. I think it's an indicator of the other costs in this proposal. And I'm just expressing my concern.
Sure, okay.
Uh, Mayor, Council, um, as the mayor mentioned, we've been through this. Uh, these are professional services. Cities like Minutrista are allowed to, um, have these, uh, professional services agreements and not have to go out for bid every time. If we decided to, this project or any other project, go out for bid, the people that are going to be responsible for putting that bid package together are going to be city staff up here, not the engineer.
And I'm not suggesting we put this out for bid for the second time. I think I made myself clear.
So, but you seem to have an issue with the dollar amount. And I would propose that the engineering is really no different than any other public sector engineering firm out there as far as cost or whatever. So if you wanted to question the, and prorate the dollar amount to an annualized amount for a, a clerical worker, you certainly are, can do that. But I would think you would see very similar, no matter who you have, compete for this particular job if we did put it off the, I'm not saying you did.
And, and again, the point isn't about the clerical worker. The point is, I'm just, that's an example and I'm.
You're saying that's an indicator, maybe this is too high.
Exactly.
And I'm saying that no matter what engineering firm you used, you would get roughly the same bid. I don't think you're going to be able to scrimp and save on clerical on one or, or chief inspector on another, there's a lot of hours there. It's just, it's just not going to change anything on the bottom line. It really isn't.
And we've worked with.
And that's why they allow that, that exemption in the state, uh, state statute. So you don't have to do those kind of games where you go out for bid or if lacking that ability, so.
We've worked, I was going to just add, I mean, if anyone's forgotten, we've worked with three different engineering firms in the last three years. And when we see the bills, the, the rates, whether it's SEH or Bolton and Mink or WSB, they've all been pretty similar to each other. So I think we've had even firsthand experience. I think we, we noticed if we were getting nickled and dimed or whatever you want to call it, or I guess, we've probably had a lot more experience in many cities that have been with the same engineering firm for twenty, thirty years. You know, we've worked with three in the last three years, so I think, um, we've, we've lived it and seen it, so. I guess, that's all, all I have there, I guess, so.
Okay, I, I understand. Yep, okay, I understand. Um, so with that, um, there's no more questions or comments. We're looking, uh, for a resolution to approve professional services agreement for the construction observation services with WSB for the Halsted Drive Improvement Project, um, in the amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars.
So moved.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen, is her second.
I'll second it.
And Ms. Thole has seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye? All those opposed?
No.
Um, Ms., uh, Bruce is opposed. Okay, four, four to one. Uh, next we move on to approving our plans and specifications and authorizing the ad for bids for the Enchanted Lane Tuxedo Road Improvement Project.
Mayor, members of the council, and I put this on the agenda, uh, this, this meeting because we are going to, let's see, July, our first July meeting doesn't happen. And then I think there's another gap in meetings, um, between August and September?
Yeah, July through August.
So I tried to put this on the meeting, uh, the meeting today to give us some flexibility in putting out the ad for bid for the Enchanted Lane Tuxedo Road Street Improvement Project. And this also includes Grandview Avenue and those improvements. The plans are about seventy or seventy-five percent complete, uh, so the plans are not complete to date. But the way the advertisement's going to work out, um, I'm trying to get the ad placed so we're still in construction in August. That's what I'm trying to hit is that August construction date, so I don't want to miss that. So I don't want to wait till our next meeting and then have a gap in that timeframe and all of a sudden we're looking at September construction. So I put it on a little prematurely, but, um, in the past, we have done similar items where the plans are nearly complete. Uh, this would be for the Batumina Reclamation, the entire roadway width, uh, the varying depths along the roadway, paving the Batumina Base and workhorses. And then we do adjust manhole castings and do some cover replacements, and this is both on Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road. Uh, Grandview is, was, um, a project that was initially a mill and overlay with the Red Oak Development and part of that was to widen that roadway two feet and then to overlay it. And, um, as we found when we did our Batumina scores, that roadway, the pavement is found to be not suitable for an overlay, so it was added to the reclaim project and the developer contributed those dollars, they were going to contribute as part of the development to the project. Again, plans are about seventy percent, maybe seventy-five percent complete, but we're asking for authorization to advertise for bids today. And there's a resolution one oh two dash seventeen in your packet.
Questions, comments?
I do have one, um, request. Um, this is specifically to Grandview. Uh, we have talked about adding concrete curb to Grandview to make it consistent with the rest of the development, uh, as well as, and actually more importantly, to, uh, curb, uh, well, literally curb the erosion problems that exist on Grandview. Uh, I know there's plans for certain sections, but given that it's a very short stretch of road, uh, and it's going to be significant, used significantly more going forward, I'd like to make sure that the final plans include, uh, concrete curb for the entire stretch. Uh, I understand there's some, on a comparative basis, relatively minor cost increase, but I think it's money well spent. Obviously, we've, based on our estimate for Halsted, we're coming in significantly under. I think it's a, a fair assessment to move a little bit of what we had planned to spend on Halsted to that, to be able to do it right. I'm a big proponent of building these roads, but building them right, and I think that's necessary in this case. So, uh, I would appreciate it if we could, within the final plans, have that incorporated.
Well, I, hold on. I'd like to find out how much more it would cost to do that, rather than just say, do it.
I agree, I agree with that. I'd like to see the difference.
That's first.
And the other issue that we have is, when you put in curb and gutter, then you have, then what you're doing is you're diverting the water from one spot to another, and then you may have to do stormwater ponds or you may have to do, um, some other stormwater issues. So that would be the other question, if, how, how is that being addressed? Or how would that be addressed?
And that, exactly, we would have to look at how that, how the watershed rules would work out for that. Typically, you do put it in a pipe and run it down to a different location. You do need, need a pond. There are ponds, hers a pond right down at the south end, or I guess on the Red Oak side of it, um, that would, I'd have to check your calculations to see if that'd be put over capacity if we added that much stormwater to it. But, uh, one of the items that we were looking at adding curb on one side, not the lake side, but the opposite side, I think it's the north side of the road, adding curb in one location to try to reduce the amount of water going from the road down a driveway into a person's garage and sitting there. So that was one person we talked to out there that, um, did need to have that, uh, did would like to have that. And then also looking at, you know, some of the areas where there may be some erosion. Um, I think on the lakeside, for the most part, that water would run off the road and fall away and the properties along, along the route, um, rather than carrying that in the curb. But we have to look at what the watershed would do, uh, as far as what rules our trigger, if we curbed once, the full one side directly into the storm system in Red Oak.
Well, and the other thing.
Run it down both sides and run it all into Red Oak.
The other concern I have at this point is, the plans and specifications are nearly complete, not quite. And now to go back and add this, it's more engineering costs, it's more staff costs, it's more cost to the project, so, um.
I'd like to address that.
Okay.
I've brought this up several times, many months now, I think since I've been on the council, which is now six months.
But I don't think anybody agreed with you.
Well, to your point about asking for costs, I think we could go down that path. We just got done assessing costs for a project that we were not going to fund, uh, but we paid for that, um, so.
Which, I'm sorry, which project?
That was adding county, adding turn lanes to County Road Forty-four. And we, we paid to have that assessed, to assess the cost of, at what that would take. So I don't think this is an unfair ask. And I don't, given that we're, we're, we're at seventy percent plan completion, I don't think that's too late, is, is your statement.
Well, okay, let's ask Mr. Hornby, um, what would that do to all of these projects? Because we were going to bid them together? How, how could it affect?
I don't know that it would affect us too much on the schedule, given the timeline and with the, asking for advertisement now. You know, the only question I have is what it would do from a permitting standpoint, and I don't have a permitting standpoint with watershed. I don't have an answer for that right now. I suspect we'd have to provide some additional water quality treatments somewhere along the line if we curb the.
And do you know what additional costs there would be for putting the curbing in?
Well, for the curb itself, you know, if you did one side of the road, we're probably looking at about fifteen thousand. If we did both sides, we're probably closer to thirty thousand.
Okay, and then plus permitting, which would be incidental probably?
It'd be, it's more time and effort on the engineering staff to give permits to.
And so the real issue is a stormwater runoff, what happens and where that goes?
Right, what the requirement would be. We're not technically going to increase the impervious surface to meet at least one of the rules where they require stormwater ponding, but I'd have to go back and find out if it triggers any other rules where you go to curb and gutter and storm service.
Okay, and so where does that put this project if you have, so what I'm wondering is, how do we go about this in order to keep this on track? Because as you were saying, you're bringing this forward now because we're not meeting until July nineteenth. So then if you have to investigate this, and then you bring it back on the nineteenth, and then you put it out for bids, is that gonna be too late for this construction season?
Well, it's later than I would like it. I would like us to be in construction in August, not in September. So it would probably push us back at least a couple of weeks on the permitting side of it. Or if we wanted to wait on the decision, we're, now we're starting construction in September, not starting construction in August.
Mr. Hornby, did we ever, earlier in the process on this, did we ever consider putting curb and gutter on this street and eliminate it for some reason?
Not that I know, not that I remember. It was originally, it originally came out as a overlay, a slight widening and overlay as part of Red Oak Development. So the goal was to get it to be twenty feet in width, I think it was eighteen now, roughly.
I mean, an extra thirty thousand, for instance, to put in the curbing, is not a huge deal. And I'd be okay with that, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about if there's more significant costs for the stormwater ponding and what that does, and then also the timing. So could I ask a question, Mr. Maliter? If we can do the curb and gutter, let's say roughly thirty thousand, but not have to be required to do a lot of ponding? Oh, I see, I'm trying to figure out how to keep this thing on track and keep moving forward without stalling it.
Yeah, I understand. And I certainly don't want to hold up Tuxedo and Enchanted, it's unfortunate that we're lumping all this together. And I understand the need to do that. And I guess probably have to look to Mr. Hornby on potential wording of this, if we can put something in here, I don't know exactly how this is gonna go to bid, but I don't know if we can address that somehow in the resolution we make. And I guess I will look to you, I don't know, perhaps Ron has something, perhaps Paul you have something, I don't know, but.
I think we could say plans and specifications and go out for bid and add in the bituminous curbing up to thirty thousand. But what I'm wondering is, what if, so then there's the curbing and then there's the stormwater issue, and what if that's an extra ten? That may not be a big deal. But what if it's an extra fifty? See, what I'm trying to figure out is how to continue to move forward and allow staff to make those decisions then, where we give them some parameters in terms of dollars.
I almost think that if you, if we trigger a stormwater rule where we have to acquire property to put in rain gardens or do that kind of thing, then that's a no-brainer, we're not gonna do that.
Right.
What I have in the contract, in the design now, is just to add curb in a couple of spots, the one in particular, so to keep, try to divert water from giving in somebody's garage. That was the only purpose I had in putting curb in, there's not curb out there today. So use it to our advantage to try to reduce the drainage issue. And I understand what Councilmember Maliter is asking, I just don't, I can't give you an answer on what the permitting would be at this point. If you'd like, I can report back to the council, either through the administrator, as far as what those permit requirements are, and, you know, give you my opinion on whether we should do this or not. I can certainly do that.
Madam Mayor, Council, maybe this is addressed to Paul. Is it, would it be possible to do this as an alternate in the bid? So that you could develop the cost for the curbing and any other things like the ponding that would go with it? I mean, you could then play that out, do that as an alternative, and when it comes back, then the council could see how much additional cost was going to be involved and could either opt for it or not.
For, just for the curbing, yes, that'd be very simple to do that. I would agree that could be an alternate. What I'm concerned about is if we have to acquire easement for.
I think that's what Ron is saying, though, you could check into.
But once we do that, then we know it's out, I would think, if we, unless the council wants.
Oh, I see what you're saying, if there's additional stormwater ponding needed, then it's out.
Yes.
Okay, is that okay?
Right, I mean, that was not the intent, I mean, if, I'm not, I mean, if it comes down to, we're gonna add curb, then we gotta add a stormwater pond, no, that just doesn't make sense. But if it's just adding curbing, then I think that does make sense. No, I don't want to get into easements for stormwater ponds, I'm better than stormwater, that's not, if that's what we're going down, no.
Okay.
But if it's simply, you know, throwing cement down two sides of the street for thirty thousand, that's kind of what I'm working on.
Okay, so maybe we'll do the curbing for an add-on or a separate alternate build? And then that way we can take it out if we want to or have to, or we can leave it in? All right, sounds like a good plan, thank you, Mr. Beatty.
In the interest of time or keeping the project on time, do we need to, at this point, you know, like, approve X to, up to X number of dollars?
No.
Or it'll still be in time enough if it comes back to that?
Because that's what Mr. Beatty was saying, is it'll come back as an alternate on the bid? So then we'll get the bids back, they'll look at it, and then it'll have to come back to us probably the nineteenth? Is that seventeen, seventeenth of July? And we'll look at the contract and we'll say, oh, okay, it's only thirty thousand for the, we don't have to do anything else, we'll include that. So we'll be approving that then, or not approving it in July.
Got it.
So it wouldn't hold up the project, so that's a good way of doing it, thank you.
Great.
All right, okay, so any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the ad for bids for the Enchanted Lane Tuxedo Road Improvement Project, including an alternate bid for Grandview of bituminous curbing.
That's concrete.
Oh, yes, thank you. Concrete, thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made that motion and Ms. Maliter seconded that. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. So now purchase of our dust abatement equipment, yay! I'm excited.
I guess, yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, I'll start out with this. Gary did most of the legwork, I just coordinated him with the budget, where the dollars are coming from and just helping, putting together the memo here. So just to give some background, so during the first part of twenty sixteen is when it came up as far as, you know, looking at purchasing our dust, dust abatement or continuing to contract the service. So later in twenty sixteen, the budget was amended to include up to fifty-five thousand from our twenty fifteen audit positive variance to purchase such equipment. So obviously, the thought was that we could go out and do dust reduction processes more often, more efficiently, better cost. Mr. Peters looked into it and on page eighty-seven, there's the, sort of the bullet points that summarize the quotes that we received. Gary had talked to multiple vendors there, Towmaster, Aspen, and Northern Salt, and was able to put together a package basically that would cost about thirty thousand dollars to purchase. It would be a twenty-six-hundred gallon tank system, which any of the more details you'll want to ask Gary on, but I'll go with what he gave me as far as the actual, what we need to functionally do it. And then also to have a small truck unit to do the shorter roads for about thirty, thirty-five, thirty-three there. And then we could get a couple of used tanks for about fifty-five hundred, so that came to about the thirty thousand dollars there. You know, Gary said there also would be some minimal additional costs for pumps and such for around probably fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. So you can see, we did some more of the analysis, you know, the chemical per application would be about fifteen thousand per application. Right now, we're paying forty-five to sixty thousand just to do one application a year. So basically, we could do it, you know, a couple, few times a year, even go out and do a part of the city if there's a certain section that maybe would need more. And, you know, by purchasing this equipment, that should last for ten to fifteen years, you know, easily, we thought. There should be a payback on the investment over time as well as the better service level. So I guess either of us will stand for questions on this item, otherwise we'd be looking for a resolution to go ahead and purchase that equipment, so.
And this was part of our C I P budget and everything, right?
Yep.
Yep, just makes sense, I mean, makes dollars and cents.
Well, the other benefit we'll get out of it too is we can do anti-icing in the winter.
Right.
You see the stripes on the road, we can be doing that too, and along with smaller units, we're doing the trails, you know, one-ten, make that safer too. You know, the anti-icing is basically putting Pam on a spray pan, you know, before you cook, it just kind of keeps the, you know, the snow and ice from bonding, makes the plowing easier, this chemical that we are using is compatible with both issues. A lot of cities in the States is using, for that particular purpose, is using just salt brine, which we could do that too, which is add a cost to have a salt brine maker, it'll be another tank, you know, a whole other production. We can do the same with this, with this chemical at the same rate, it's a little bit more than what the salt brine is, but we're eliminating all the cost of a salt brine maker, another tank just for salt brine and that type of stuff. So this'll be a year-round usable product, so.
Is it actually chloride, I mean, is it salt or chloride?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, we're using calcium chloride, so.
Yeah, calcium chloride.
It's, it's good, basically about twenty-five below. So you just have to thin it down a little bit for winter, which is not a big deal. You just, you know, dilute it a little bit. And both our supplier, if you would, Northern Salt or the one that we're presently using for this time was EnviroTech, both of the representatives have said they'll supply product and they will help us at the end of the year to make the product usable for winter and stuff. The ultimate goal is just to have enough on hand, use what we need, have, you know, a little bit of supply for winter as we need it, and go from there, so I don't want to carry over too much of it, so. The other beauty of it is, instead of doing it one time at a heavy rate, we can do several smaller rates, which, you know, they want a gravel road, you know, it takes more than just one time a year to do it. So we can get out grade a little more often then and not have to worry about the effect of dust, we can, you know, quickly shoot it again. And I say, most of this will be the major roads that we'd be looking at, we wouldn't be doing our dead ends every time, you know, it'd be, you know, the, you know, you know, the Sunny Fields, the West Branches, the Deer Creek, you know, our main runs would be more where we'd be doing the two, three applications. The dead end properties that we have or the dead end roads.
You'd do those once a year?
Once a year, I mean, they don't get the heavy traffic, they're not beat up as much, so.
Right.
You know, and rain does a cause and effect, so we'd have, you know, the opportunity to do it too, but basically we're looking at doing the major thoroughfares, you know, two to three times a year if we need be, so.
Good.
Hey Gary, would you mind talking a little bit about your tank purchase? Because if the council read through this like they didn't know they did, you know, we budgeted fifty-five and we ended up spending thirty-something.
Thirty-two, yeah.
It's not like we were bad at figuring this out, it's just that he got a pretty decent deal on his.
Yeah, one of the things we looked at is if we keep this inside, which if we were doing salt brine and stuff, you'd have to keep it inside, so we had to have everything inside, which would involve double-wall tanks as such. We're putting it outside, and since this project is, you know, not under, you know, the rules of it being outside, we can use a single-wall tank. Now, we can get single-wall tanks also, but Northern Salt had come up when I was talking to them, he said, well, what are you gonna store it in? And I said, well, we're putting it inside, he said, well, this can sit outside, everybody's does, you know, for this type of chemical, sits outside. He says, we've got a deal for you, we had, last year they had bought tanks for a manufacturing company to use. The project they had kind of went belly up, to say, so they were stuck with these tanks extra. I mean, they had gotten a good deal on them, so they were willing to part with them for us. We were looking at purchasing just two, three-thousand gallon tanks, which is enough for a semi-load, which is anywhere from ten to twenty-one thousand, I was looking at the bid. I mean, what I got from Aspen was for two, three-thousand gallon tanks, you know, was twenty-one thousand for brand-new, out the door. Where they're willing to depart with these, and one is a five-thousand, one's a six-thousand gallon tank. It's overkill, but for fifty-five hundred dollars delivered, I mean, it's, it's a great deal. We really can't pass it up.
And how old is, are those tanks?
They're only a year old.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're, basically, they're new but used, so.
Okay.
You know, which, you know, you gotta do the piping, we gotta do all that work and put the pump in and stuff, transfer pumps and stuff like that, but, I mean, for the price, you really can't pass them up for that, for that type of pricing, so.
Good.
So that's the savings.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Almost twenty, well, more than twenty thousand.
Yeah, they're looking to part with them, they had six tanks and they've got these two left, and they're willing to make a deal to get them out of their yard, so. They don't do them any good sitting there, so.
All right.
I'm sure they got paid for them once, so. They're just looking to get rid of them on a little better deal and make us a good deal. And Northern Salt was our supplier last year that did our dust abatement, and both companies have an equally good product. And we're talking to Paul, wants to get, you know, this all arranged, you know, to really kind of see which product is better, about the same price no matter what, it's just there's a little bit of variance in them, but, you know, I kind of had to sit down with Paul and kind of talk to him about the real fine-tuning and maybe get one of their experts to sit down with us and kind of figure out which one is gonna be better for us in the long run, so.
Yeah, and amounts and so on and so forth, yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, all right, great, we've been waiting for this, so.
And I'm sorry it took so long.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, is there a motion to approve the purchase of the dust abatement equipment, including some cost, additional pumps for a total of, let's just round it up to thirty-three thousand? It'll be a little under thirty-three thousand.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. So next, we have to accept our Tristada sponsorship donations. Who wants to do that?
I'll do that.
Okay?
So just like we did last year, we collected sponsorship dollars just to help cover the costs of the pig races. We collected thirty-three hundred dollars to cover the costs, as everyone is well aware, it rained cats and dogs, but not pigs. All but one of our sponsors have opted to piggy-bank that money, so they're guaranteed the same benefits, and our sponsorship then is covered for next year. So for a total of thirty-three hundred, we have that sitting in the bank for next year with sponsors receiving all the benefits they got this year, they'll also receive next year plus sun.
Okay, all right, and thanks to all of our sponsors, I know there were a number of them. It's always good to have, have them participate and be a part of our community, so that's wonderful, thank you to all of them. Is there a motion to accept the donation sponsorship money from Tristada twenty-seventeen? In the, I think it totals thirty-three hundred dollars.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made the motion and Ms. Bruce seconded. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. So next, we'll move on to our next, that's also Ms. Tabor, approval of her customer service and communications assistant position.
Yes, so, sorry, thank you. So the city council tonight is being asked to approve a new position with a job description of her customer service and communications assistant position. This would be replacing our existing position, which is the administrative aide slash deputy clerk. And that's the role that Joni Sanquist fills right now, as everyone is well aware, she's retiring. And so this wouldn't add to our F T Es, this would be an equal exchange. Joni has been in her position for over twenty-two years, so as Mike mentioned earlier in our work session, this is a good opportunity, anytime we have someone who's been in a role for a great deal of time and is retiring, it's a good time to reassess the position, make sure it's meeting our needs, realign the duties as well for opportunities for others within the staff, and then obviously to maximize. and then obviously to maximize efficiency as well. So this would remove the Deputy City Clerk duties from this, the recycling program duties from the old position, and it formally adds in the duties related to the work of building inspections. Obviously, that's been a big change since Joanie's position was originally written and updated. And it adds an entry-level communications duty, just to help with efficiency with that new line of business that we have, too. So with the deletion and additions with this set of job duties, the grade position would be a grade level five, which is one grade level lower than it currently stands for Joanie, and a salary range of nineteen-twenty-five to twenty-five-oh-two. As I mentioned, Joanie's current role, the Administrative Aid Deputy City Clerk, is a level six, and that range is twenty-forty to twenty-six-fifty-two. The final position summary, and this is an important note here, is currently being created by Mr. Jamak, and we've been working with him on that. And so tonight, what we're looking for, even though it's, this isn't completely ready, we're looking for the ability to put an add-out for this position as soon as we're able to garner the final details of that without having a delay into that August meeting, July or August meeting.
Especially since we have another employee out, too, for a while, so.
Correct. And, and the job duties are changing, but as described here, it isn't going to be significantly different than what you're hearing tonight. It's just that minor piece of actually writing those job duties and formalizing it in the job description. So we'd like the ability to put that out and start hopefully collecting some good applications.
Okay. Question?
I do have a question. So we are removing the Deputy Clerk role, component of this job. What is the plan to pick that up?
Our plan at this point is to look to add it into other existing roles to provide some growth opportunities within our current staff.
So it would, my guess, my concern, I'm thinking, actually, it's very relevant now with having our existing clerk out for six weeks, and you can see, or I can see everything in the packet now, as, as Joanie's name, as a deputy clerk. If that were not, if we did not have her here right now-
Oh, I see what you're asking.
What would happen?
Yes.
Because we wouldn't have you then.
So we currently have another person that can fulfill that role, is my understanding, so.
Yeah, and if we, with Joanie's retirement day after the next council meeting, if Ms. Link was, status is still where she's not back at work, we'll, we'll figure out a way to deputize, I guess is the phrase, another staff member, probably the staff member that's going to get the particular job duties and line her up and be able to sign public documents of the kind of nature. So we have an opportunity to do that at our next council meeting, but again, I don't see that as an issue. We hope actually to have those realigned job duties included in, in the packet for the July meeting anyway, so. Hopefully, that's how you're making your decision on that. But we realize that there's a vulnerability there, but I think with a, on a day's grace period, we're gonna be fine, so.
Okay. I didn't know how much of a task it was to-
It could. I don't think it's gonna be very difficult at all, so.
Some of the, the ones that we have in mind have been working closely with Joanie for many years, so it'll, should be a pretty smooth transition.
So with the added responsibility, will they be getting the increases as well?
We believe so, yes. And that's, again, the, the whole point of doing that was, you heard tonight from Mr. Jamak, you know, you assess your, your jobs to kind of be based on your current business lines. With Joanie's job, not having eternal for twenty-something years, this gave us that opportunity. And we have some very, very capable staff people that I know can handle the additional job duties. And they're frankly looking for additional duties. We want them to, to grow here and not go elsewhere to grow, so.
In, in terms of cost, it's because Joanie's job is up here, the new job will be here, and these, you know, it'll all kind of equal out, so to speak?
I won't, I won't-
I mean, maybe not exactly, but-
Yeah, I won't BS the council and say it's gonna be a wash, but I think what we get out of it in these realigned positions is going to be worth it. So I don't think it's gonna be a huge cost difference, but there may be some. We just haven't crunched all the numbers yet, so.
So how many people are we spreading this across?
Two.
Okay. So we're, the plan is to break up recycling to one and deputy to another?
Essentially. There might be some other things. The building inspections area as well needs to go to somebody, so. That was frankly, that was a, a job duty that Joanie just got. I mean, we never formally added it to her, her job description. So that's why it says that formally add the job duties of building inspection area, because we never formally did it. We just said, hey, here you go. So, because she handles a lot of permit, so it's kind of a natural fit.
Okay. Okay, good question. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the Customer Service and Communications Assistant position and to authorize staff to proceed with posting that? And let's see, you want a grade level five and request the authorization to begin the recruitment process?
Some moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second it.
Okay. Ms. Bruce made the motion, and Ms. Thole seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. We're gonna move on to staff reports real quick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got just a few items. As mentioned earlier, our next council meeting will be in four weeks on July seventeenth. We skipped the meeting on, I guess, I guess it would be July third, just around the July fourth holiday. And then also, as a reminder, the meeting after that will be a three-week gap. That's because there are five Mondays in July, so if you had fourteen-seventeen, you get July thirty-first, that's Monday. That would normally have been the night if there weren't thirty-one days in July, but if there is. So we will meet in four weeks for our next meeting and three weeks after that, so kind of our summer vacation, I guess. We'll be recognizing Joanie Sanquist, who we just were talking about, at our July seventeenth city council meeting. There'll be some more information to come on that. We're gonna go into closed session here shortly, but one of the things that we haven't touched on yet is now that our, in essence, our work with the water treatment plants being completed, at some point in time here in the near future, we hope to do some sort of dedication ceremony to kind of officially christen those, those plants. And then one final item, I did get a chance to go down to Rochester last Wednesday to see the mayor win her award, the Minnesota Women in City Government for an elected official. It's, it's good to be there. So it was at the opening ceremony, or the ceremony, ceremony, opening session of the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, and this is part of the, that first session, so it was fun to watch, so. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
That's all I had. I know Cassandra's got-
Okay. Ms. Tabor?
Goodness, sorry. I've got a lot of things I'm thinking about here. So with, this Wednesday, we have invited OSHA to come out and visit us. OSHA typically comes out unannounced on an unannounced basis, but it's usually every few years. We have not seen OSHA since before '09. And so one of the strategies when we looked to reassess how we were handling our safety committee, moving away from MNUA, was to set ourselves up so that we could invite OSHA out. The benefit of that is twofold. One is that when they come out, it's a learning process, and so unless something is imminently life-threatening, they can't or won't find us if there is something that we're missing. We are still given a window of time and the expectation that we would rectify anything that they find, but it just saves us financially if there is something that we're missing. The other benefit is if we do well on that and pass from their standards, then we get a larger window of time, typically five years, unless there's a report of negligence or unless there's an accident. Typically, one that was life-ending accident, we won't see them again then for five years. And as of the new building being built in police, we're actually considering two locations, so we could have two separate visits. This will encompass both locations, which ideally then will give us five years on both locations before we have any surprise visits. So just a goal to be proactive. So that's happening on Wednesday. They'll come out about ten o'clock, and they're expecting to spend a few hours here, three ideally, more if necessary, so.
All right.
We're anticipating to go very well. I invited our League of Minnesota Cities Safety rep out, I believe it was about two weeks ago.
Yeah, we also met about six weeks ago and kind of just setting it up.
Yeah, and went through that with them, and then we invited them to come out and do a mock walkthrough, and she said that we were in better shape than a vast majority of cities that she sees, and that we were proactive inviting the Lea, excuse me, the League out on top of them being proactive about inviting OSHA out. So at our next meeting, I will definitely be able to give a report on how that went.
Great. Any other staff reports?
I just need to know who's attending the planning commission meeting next week.
Okay. Any volunteers? I just attended last month, so.
I haven't been to one yet. What, what day is it?
Monday.
The date?
The twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. All right. So then, I'll just move on. I'll try and be brief. So I attended the Regional Council Mayor's meeting on last Monday, and one of the presenters, so they were talking about the changing world of retail. And one of the things that kind of came across that was interesting is, one, you do have, well, we always knew this, you have to have rooftops before retail's gonna come to your city, and that's one of our problems. But the other thing is, they were saying, if you have or can entice a grocer to come to your community, or you have one, make sure they stay, because they kind of anchor your community, and it was really interesting. So we won't go into a lot of details about that, but, because we are gonna go into closed session pretty soon. But the other thing is, I did ask our staff if our Chief of Police could, at our next city council meeting, under special presentations, do a police report, and I believe you're gonna do that, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think you're referring to a, just a summary of the annual report. Is that-
Yes, yes, just so that you can be on camera and, and everybody can kind of know what's going on, so.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you very much. And then, as Mr. Barone stated, I did attend the annual League of Minnesota Cities conference. It was a really, really good conference, a lot of wonderful speakers, and also good work sessions. And there were so many, and obviously, I could only go to a few, and went to several of them, and I won't go into details. But I'll probably be bringing some of those ideas forward later on. And I just want to say one thing. I, I do want to show the award that I got, and I, I, and I didn't have an opportunity at the opening ceremony to say anything. However, later on, the Minnesota Women in City Government had a little recognition open house, and I did want to thank some people, and I did do that there. Mr. Barone, you had already left. But the people I really want to thank are, one, our staff, Mr. Barone in particular, and all of our other wonderful staff, and also Ms. Mortensen for nominating me, but also for Ms. Thole and Ms. Mortensen for working with me and working together on accomplishing this, because I could not have done it with you. Sincerely, I mean that. This, this really, this award really should go to all of us. And the other person I recognized, of course, was my husband for all of his support in helping this as well. And so I just wanted to say thank you to all of you folks. Thank you very, very much. It really is a great honor, and we're gonna leave this at City Hall, and you can look at it. So with that, I'll conclude my report. Any other council reports?
None for me this meeting.
I went to WCC meeting on the eighth, and they talked about dog days coming up on August twelfth, and there will be more information coming out on that. And also, the Oak Ridge Pet Boarding and Daycare, they're celebrating their fifty years. They were in the Laker, I think it was last week.
Yeah, they were.
So they talked a little bit about that and handed out brochures. And I did attend the bus tour again. I thought it was excellent. I learned new things.
Yeah, it was fun.
Visiting Fern Garnia's home was very fun. And, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see the bus tour get publicized more. It's amazing. You know, you mention it, and they don't hear, you know-
We'll have to work on that, yeah.
I don't know, we'll think of something.
We'll get it.
We'll strap them to the pigs or something. We'll do something.
Okay. Mr. Mollot, or anything?
I also attended the bus tour, same, same comments as well. LMCD, attended that last week. Just a couple of things. Their budget has gone on for comment. I think it's pretty straightforward. There's a new liquor license for Alamo. They have a new boat. It's not a new boat. It was purchased from another place in the lake, so there's liquor license to go with that. BIVU is event center. Public hearing was continued and finally resolved. They have a temporary license until they have new ownership. So other side of the lake from Alamo is, is more interesting.
A little closer, yeah. All right. Thank you. Ms. Bruce, anything?
I wasn't able to attend the Pioneer Sarah Creek Water Commission meeting, but I did send an email to their ED, and he got back to me that they passed their budget as recommended by the Budget Committee. So that's the only thing to report.
Okay, all right. So with that concludes our regular business items and reports for our regular meeting. We will go into closed session for the discussion pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot oh-five.